Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning. The first item on our agenda is with regards to the BP litigation report and update. We have our special counsel that came down yesterday and has had the opportunity to join and meet with each of the commissioners this morning. I thank you each for your time to do that, meeting one-on-one with our special counsel. What I'd like to do is introduce Mr. Ron Jones and Bradley Frye from Beasley Allen Firm to come up to the podium, just to give you all a general summary of where we've been since the appearance on April 16th, I believe, prior to the filing deadline, and the procedural history that's transpired in the last ninety days. And then, not without the detail that you've all gone into today, but kind of a summary of where we're going in the coming months as we finish out the year. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'll be brief. We did file suit, which we felt like was the appropriate thing to do with your permission. Oh, Ron Jones, my name. You'd think a lawyer would know better. That's what they're doing. When everyone's caught in New Orleans, that's the first thing the judge always says when you get there, is just please identify yourself. I'm like, well, I know where I am, but I'll identify myself anyway. Yep, Ron Jones, Beasley Allen, pleased to represent Gulf County. And as I said, with y'all's permission, we did file the suit because we wanted to keep all options open as far as being able to recover. And we are proceeding forward. We're heavily involved with the MDL proceedings, and of course, we're have Gulf County at the forefront of what we're doing. And we're just trying to make sure that if there's an avenue of recovery, that we have it. And we're going to push forward, and I guess all the while, we want to be mindful that if there is an opportunity for resolution, short of trying the case, actually litigating the case, that we are aware of it and keeping you guys apprised, and that obviously, if such an opportunity arises, we want to take that to make sure that we can resolve this matter as quickly and as efficiently as possible. And that's what we're working to do.
Do I have anything else from the board?
Mr. Chairman, a couple meetings ago, I had requested that one of them come down and give us an update, you know? I mean, we've got been in this process for pretty good long while, and I think we need to get a resolution as quickly as possible. There's others that have got some resolution, although there's some issues. Ron certainly answered my questions this morning in our meeting, so I'm going to go on forward and understand the process.
Right, I think the overall goal remains the same. If there is a solution that makes sense and that is fair to Gulf County, then that's where we want to go. Nobody is in this just to litigate. Your eye must always be on a potential resolution, if there is a fair one, that is possible. And that's obviously goal number one, and has been from day one.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate the time. Mr. Chairman, the second item I have today is with regards to TDC policy issues. The first item under the TDC is with regards to its current policy for sponsorship. There's a couple of annual events in the community, namely the Tupelo Honey Festival, the Kids' Room, and the Plain Air. Under the current TDC policy that was recently adopted in this past year, there's a window of time, I think it's forty-five days, a month and a half, in which they're able to submit their packet on the back end. Some of these events have turned their packet in a few days after that. Nothing egregious or really outside the box, obviously just accumulating it, adapting to the new policy. It's our recommendation that you don't amend the policy, but that if you would, so the clerk's office can pay the sponsorship reimbursement grants to the Kids' Room, to Grow Honey, and Plain Air, if you would suspend the TDC policy specifically for those three events to give the clerk's office and Ms. Jenkins the ability to reimburse them after their packages have been evaluated and approved. And then going forward into the coming year, leave the policy the way it is, we'll deal with an isolated incident as we are this year. But those three events are outside the actual policy limit for the forty-five days, and we'd ask for your approval funding those three events.
I heard the recommendation from our attorney. Do I have anything from the board?
So move to follow that recommendation.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No one opposed? Motion carries forward, no.
Our second TDC issue is going back a few months. Ms. Jenkins came before you all, gave you her biweekly report, specific with regards to BP funding. There was a recommendation from Ms. Jenkins in the TDC on moving funds forward, specifically with regards to BP, the outstanding BP funds that were available to the county. She laid out a plan, I think, for advertising use of those dollars and marketing, and presented that to you all. In the scheme of things and the procedural procedures that we followed in that meeting that morning, there was never a vote to ratify that recommendation from the TDC. What we'd asked you all to do is to reach back and please approve that. They've moved forward, but the clerk's office needs that for the record to ratify that approval from the commission.
Here from the attorney, do I have anything from the board?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries forward, no.
Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Norris, is there anything in that specifically you need for the record? I mean, specifically reference a code or a line item, or is that...
No, I think Sherry and Jennifer can work that out, but the next step would be for the board to approve and allow the clerk's office to move forward with setting a supplemental budget hearing to take care of that matter.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries forward, no.
And Ms. Norris, that's before the end of the fiscal year, and it is after five o'clock on any date it's chairman and the commission chooses.
That's correct, and I can, we can coordinate that with Don and the chair.
Okay, so just so we know, in the coming two months, okay? The last item I've circulated in front of all of you is a appraiser's aerial of a piece of property out in Wendell Gap in Abalone on San Joe Beach, specifically in Beacon Hill. If you all would, and you can have the property appraisers aerial, as well as, we went out and took a couple pictures of the actual specific property. The request from a private landowner and their attorney, if you would, you'll note on the actual picture of the four pictures of the piece of property, if you look closer, there's actually a property marker, a white stake in the actual asphalt of the concrete driveway. That is the property line. On the survey I provided to each of you as well, it denotes that concrete wall. That concrete wall is an encroachment of county right-of-way and county property. There's been a request of District Three and of the county to take into consideration the encroachment and to provide an easement going forward for that encroachment. We went out and looked at the property. There's an adjacent county right-of-way and county road that's directly behind that you can see in there. Based on the impacts to have that removed and the considerable cost to the county, there's a consideration and request that we grant them a easement specifically for that concrete wall, which is an encroachment right now. I provided you each a proposed language for the easement as well, that's in front of all of you. I'm not going to read the whole easement to you all, but I just wanted to touch on two parts, which is obviously the weighing out of the cost to the county if that wall is removed, and to go out and fix the road in the right-of-way. And also, going forward, I'm just going to read the actual provision. It's understood that the easement is given upon the express understanding and condition that this may be used by the chemists, their heirs, or successors, and assigns with the express condition required ongoing maintenance, upkeep, improvements of the concrete wall and their maintenance described here in perpetuity. In essence, it's their job to maintain that concrete wall. If it falls into disrepair, it is their obligation to fix it and to keep it up. If they don't, then the easement will terminate, and that will be considered an encroachment, and the county can take action at a future date. But those provisions are provided in the easement. With your authorization, we'll have the chairman execute this, and we'll provide this to the property owner going forward to provide them with that approval of that encroachment. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll make the motion for the chairman to execute the...
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant? Got a second by Mr. Yeager? Do I have any opposed?
Question, question, question. Are we talking about, there's three segments here? All three? Okay, you got three steps there on this concrete. You got the long one, the lower, then you have it elevated, then you have the...
Yeah.
All of that is included.
Yes, sir, if you look at the survey, you'll see that concrete wall denoted on there, where it creeps over into the county's property.
Oh, yeah.
All three segments are that, yeah. The majority of that concrete wall is all an encroachment, that's correct, all three segments.
Oh, that's on the side street, right?
It is on the side street, and there's a considerable slope there.
It's been there a long time, and it's kind of a serving as a retaining wall.
Yeah. So I got a motion by Ms. Bryant, I have a second by Mr. Yeager. Mike Daniel, you satisfied?
What?
You satisfied? Got a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries forward, no.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, thank you.
The chairman gave you a handout, revenue additions and expense reductions, also a handout showing the potential pay increase to county employees. If I go through that first one, the revenue additions, and I just talked with Mrs. Clopkin, she pointed out that the COVID fees was already in proposal number two, but so definitely it's not bringing a number of seven hundred dollars. But the chicken fees, you went from forty dollars a ton to sixty dollars a ton on chicken fees, planned for October 1st, the increase to your pickup would be sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. EMS dry run fees, this would be, those dry runs we make, and also those that we have intervention on, pickup and additional ten thousand dollars. You're not getting any money for those runs today. EMS Sacred Heart contract, another conservative number of seventy thousand dollars from hospital to hospital, which certainly will help our bottom line on EMS.
Don, on that one, have you signed that contract, or is that contract in the process?
EMS Sacred Heart, it's in the process of being finalized.
The next one is EMS mileage fee increase, this is one dollar per mile increase. We're still below some jurisdictions, which is runway miles, not both ways. Pickup and additional five thousand dollars. COVID fees, we pointed out in the area that that was in proposal number two, but got moved from fifty to a hundred dollars per permit, increased to seven hundred dollars. Building department fee increase, this is not an increase, not a change in rates for the building department. This would be due to growth. We project growth would be greater than what we have in the book already, so that's an additional twenty-five thousand. Third-party EMS collections, we replace over, hopefully in the next month, we can increase this number some, but we got a thousand dollars in our line. Revenue contract for the bad debts that they're not paying on EMS, we have a contract with a collector now. Beach driving permit increase, twenty thousand dollars, and that was to do with the one from fifteen to thirty dollars for in-county, a hundred and fifty to two hundred for our county, and the weekend, and the weekend, this does not include anything for weekend yet, as we determine what that'll be, that we can add some more money to your table. This is for the in-county and our county. Expense reductions, we're looking at moving from the old courthouse, and we are either to the substation or the old health department building. We think this is a conservative number. We know we pay about eighteen thousand dollars a year for mid-termist. We're short a twenty thousand dollar reduction. We know there's some other, you know, elevators and other costs we have to pay out, so we think you can save twenty thousand there by making that move. And the next one is infrastructure reserve reduction. We are suggesting you take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left reserved. It cuts it down in half of what we had, and if you, that would be the reduction, we have a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, there'd be some minor changes, we have seven hundred, is our number now, but we're looking at three hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars on this sheet of either revenue additions or expense reductions. And in all those, there's revenue additions, there's cover that you need to pass for resolution, beach driving fees and chicken fees and barbecue, take care of that, all that, all that resolution. But also choose this, and go ahead and get that finalized, as for the revenue additions and the expense reductions.
Don, just a couple of questions. Number one, the infrastructure reduction, what we had that in there forward, the first place was this, the building out back, and we pretty much got that taken care of.
Yeah, the plan, the grand plan was, we get the building by the road, get it up, so it won't deteriorate, and we won't lose panels and beams. We got it dried in though, our doors up, so when, at this phase, and that's going, it's probably going to take a while to figure out what we need inside that building, and it's pretty electrical and the office space and the exhaust for the, for the exhaust for the dills, and how to get that out. So that's not in the plan so far, that's not in the plan to continue that building. We got it up, so it does not deteriorate.
Okay, and it looks like to me, these are pretty conservative numbers on the revenue additions, so I think at the end of the day, you may have a little more at the end of the day for cash carry forward for the next year, so I think those are conservative numbers. And if we need a motion to pass these, if board's ready, or if they have any further questions.
Mr. Butler, what is the total in the infrastructure reserve that we're reducing by one fifty?
Just three something.
Three seven six five.
And Ms. Chairman, if there's no further questions, I'd move that we adopt these...
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager. Can I get a second?
I'll second for the question. Yeah, let's just, okay.
Mr. Mike Daniel.
On the, the pulling the reserves, one fifty in the, there, so with the additional revenue and the reduction in reserve, that's the main one, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And understand, this isn't coming from your reserve for contingencies, this is specifically for that one-line item, and so at the end of the day, I think we got more than enough in there for any...
We have, well, you got your one five, or one-six in your restrictive reserves, and any cash carry forward, which we have to have, and then contingencies are out there immediately. Three seventy, and that's going to move us a bit, let me ask a question. Is this factored in? It's a proposal, please.
A few of them were, the revenues, the resolution that you have in front of you, there's two of them. The first one has a twenty thousand for beach driving and one for tipping fees for sixty-eight seven fifty. Those were already approved by you, we were just waiting on the numbers.
Okay.
So they are included in your proposal number three, so we would need or to ratify those by resolution. The others that is proposed by Mr. Butler, with the exception of the seven hundred, which he explained to you already, was in there in the previous one, the other ones are in the second resolution, are not included in proposal number...
So the two twenty-six five that's left, you're saying is enough to complete the building?
Yeah. In that infrastructure reserve, to some extent, you know, I'm calling it a catch-all, but there's typically where there's even equipment, something that would break, it's in there. Two, the big one number, the one of, not the biggest portion of it, but that one big number would be, if the board agreed today, this been in work, we've been talking about for years, where in the south end of county, the sheriff is located in four locations, dispatch, the evidence room is second location, the sheriff's office, third location, the investigator's office, fourth location. The idea would be to get them all in one location, or no more than two, even if dispatch stays where it is, have the sheriff's office in the same building. So that would be, it'd take a change, it'd take a move between the sheriff's office and supervisor relations. And so doing, there'd be some relation to be done, and there's about a hundred thousand dollars in that pot, just for that. So and the rest of it, the remaining portion of that money in the infrastructure reserve would be for those catchalls, you will have breakdowns, you will have problems that you got to reach back, you reach back into it slightly this year, the current year, I think, for the recycling.
I think one good thing about this fund, and leading it a little bit, but one good thing about this fund is, is it's not your reserve for contingencies, it's not like you're moving it from a reserve, it's specifically for infrastructure items that obviously are going to affect us from day to day in operations.
I have a motion by Mr. Yeager. I have a second by Mr. Mike Daniel.
It'll stand, it was, I'll leave him a second.
Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? I have no opposed? Motion carries forward, no.
Can I talk a little bit to, we've saved a lot of money here for the last five or, I don't know, four, five, six years, we, and I don't mean to go back to it, but the raises for employees, we continually just not give them a raise, and their healthcare benefits have continually to rise, so they've actually, over the last four or five years, have got a pretty good reduction in salary, so I want to throw that out to this board. I know it's a tough year, it'll continue to be tough years for the next few years, but at the end of the day, I think to maintain our workforce and to, you know, we got some people making, what's a, like, some of them, some of the folks in Public Works are making twelve to thirteen dollars an hour. It's hard making twelve or thirteen dollars an hour to pay healthcare benefits. I think at the end of the day, we need, we should consider using some of this money for raises, and I just, I wanted to throw that out at the end of the day for discussion and a motion, but...
I know last week, we was in a meeting, and we brought that up about, I don't know if we could do it, if the employees make a certain amount, we can make the employees on the bottom side of the scale. I mean, is that something that we could do without crossing over? Any trouble with?
The numbers you threw out last week...
I mean, I just heard the number forty thousand threw out on the table, that wasn't nothing that we just...
It would be contrary to your union contract. You can't give some union employees pay raise, not give others a pay raise. So your highest-paid union employee is in the fifties.
What you're telling us, that you can't have a step down, say, all in this salary bracket, I'm going to just use numbers, you give them a three percent, and this group here, they get a two percent, and higher, if, man, I'll get any. I know we can with salary, but you got this union contract that's involved, so maybe upon a zero, it's all got to be the same.
You'd have to have the agreement of the, of the local, do it...
I agree, I'd rather have on the lower end, the ones that's on up above a certain number there. I'm going to have everyone, but it may be where you have to do it in steps.
Yeah, and that I've done, the union has agreed to some being a lower percent than others, it's always been the same percentage.
It's a flat across the board.
Flat across the board.
Union ain't never faced this problem, we probably want nobody get a raise.
There you go.
I mean, we in desperate times right now, we really want to help those, like Mr. Yeager said, those guys making thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, they catching a hard time out there. But I mean, that's something I, we need to really talk about.
Well, we run the numbers, I run the numbers, and this, and there's a couple sheets you have, that one in color is those last five categories, it's showing the salary, the public Medicare retirement.
Right here.
For those constitution officers. Four, eight percent, the black and white sheet being this, this sheet shows the rate for the county employees, and there's the total across the line, that grand total. That one percent for constitution officers and the people working on the county commission base, that's one percent, basically three percent would be a total of two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. And that would be a three percent increase across the board.
How much?
Three, three percent. At two oh seven represents three percent.
That's on the three, the two oh seven is on the three percent.
And guys, we've just saved three hundred and seventy thousand dollars by getting our revenue things, I think we need to consider that three percent pay raise. Number one, Brad, what's the increase in the healthcare cost this year? Was it six, seven? Six and a half, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, these people are going in a hole. I know it's tough times, we've been here for tough times for the last five years, but I think this board needs to consider that three percent pay raise.
Well, I, don't get me wrong, I don't, knocking the three percent pay raise, but the three percent ain't going to help the thirteen dollar guy, like it's going to help someone making twenty dollars an hour. That's the only, that's the only thing I have against percentage raises. It's designed to keep the small man small. Doesn't it take him so long to get to the top on a percentage when you ain't making the thirteen? You get three percent of thirteen, then somebody making twenty dollars, and you give them three percent of twenty.
You know, I know it's a minimal raise, I know it's not a whole lot of money for each employee, especially the ones that are making the twelve, thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, at the end of the day, what I'm trying to do is keep their head above water. What I'm trying to do is make sure that they're able to pay their health insurance increases and all those kinds of things. That's my argument short, and I, you know, I won't belabor it, I know it's tough times. We've been in tough times for five years, and so I think at the end of the day, we got to consider it.
So we take the, take the, what was, two hundred and seventy?
Two oh seven, I think.
Two oh seven here, and what was I, one, three seventy?
Seventy.
Yeah, here it is, right here, the three seventy on the, on the, straight across would be two oh seven, so...
Yeah, we're still talking, oh, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
There's some deductions that I think the board made the last board meeting, I'm looking at Sherry, it may not be in that number, we adjusted, we adjusted sheriff's office and some other offices, extension service. Are those, Sherry, are those been calculated yet, or?
I'm not, everything that was proposed and voted on last time is in the proposal number three.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Now, I'd rather just go a flat rate across the board in the percentage. I don't like percentage raises, like, just give them a straight something across the board.
You mean just a, a half of twenty-five cents an hour?
We're going to give every, give one person twenty-five cent, let's give everybody twenty-five cent. I think the person, I mean, I do not agree with percentage raises, it's not designed to really help the man at the bottom of the totem pole. I've been there too many days, I haven't seen it too much. It's not designed for that.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Chair. Don, can we work with clerk's office and come up with something close to three percent on average, and come back with a board with a figure? I know we got, we don't have a whole lot of time here.
If the board agreed to this number, and then we just take, here is what it is. We take this number, divide by the number of employees, and divide by the hours, and here is what it is. Board agrees that, it'd be great, we can go ahead and set the minimum rate, try to date today.
You know, and I don't know, still debate, but if board's ready for a motion, I'll put that in the form of a motion for Don to work with the clerk's office on that number. We put it in the budget for that.
What exact number is that number?
Two oh seven...
Two oh seven nine sixteen sixty-four.
Can we round that up to sixty-three? Because we can't work with change. We have, we work in whole numbers, so...
Sure, sure, I'll put that, I'll put that in the motion, in that way that we can, we can go to work on it.
So we still working on the percentage, that's what we're...
We'll work on, we'll let the, we'll let the clerk and Don work on that total number and giving everybody a similar raise. That will at least bring your lower-paid employee up closer on percentage-wise to your higher-paid employee, so that, you know, it'll affect the lower-paid employee more, as you say.
Yeah, you need to talk to us about that.
That's correct.
Well, we need to negotiate with them on this. If not, and take it off the boat, we can just take it off the table.
Our agreement, what we did, we're in the third year of our contract, our agreement, we didn't change anything two years ago in the union contract, the agreement is, we're on pain, what we look at would be payroll... we're on pain, what we look at would be pay raises and, and whatever the board gave other employees is what they're looking at. So that's, we tied in on third year on that, on that agreement. So whatever they gave you other employees would be what the union would get also.
I think at the end of the day, Ms. Chairman, my motion would be for the, for Don and the clerk to work through this. And we set that number, so it'll be in the budget, and so we can set our mileage rates and move forward, go from there. I hate we can't do more for the employees because they're, they're going in a hole. And I've been, I've been the recipient of this when I worked at Arizona Chemical for thirty years. I went through some years that was zero percent and three percent, and zero percent, and three percent. It's, it's small raise, but it's something I think that we've, at this point, we've gotta consider. It's been too long since we've tried to increase them. So I'll, I'll leave that on the floor for a second.
Hands are kinda, Ms. Chairman, our hands are kinda tied, tied. I worked with unions for thirty years and, uh, when you have a bargaining unit and you have a, there, there's things you can do and things you can't. Like, and I would, uh, let him pass, or, you know, with every union, with every unions, same way with the, Mr. Yeager here. There's a lot of stipulations in there that you, you wanna do it, and I agree with you. I, I'd like to help them, but your hands are tied. It's a thing that we'll try to work through this.
This, this number was calculated on your regular employees, full-time employees, was not based on part-time employees.
That's right. That's what we want to fill down the board. I'll leave that motion on the floor.
I got a motion, got a motion by Mrs. Yeager?
I'll second it, Paul.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Uh, you said that, what's going on now?
Well, I, I'll support the motion for the purpose of, um, moving forward and coming back with the information. But I, obviously, we are constrained by, um, the agreements with the union. And I think we also have to make certain that we are fair across the board. Um, many times we have different pay for different jobs because of job itself and bill level required or the length of service that someone's been here. So I, I don't, I don't think we should advise folks that have been here longer or, um, have a high level of skill that they bring to their jobs. I think we have to make sure that we attain that fairness. But, um, I, I will support it to look at the information that is back.
We'll obviously have to, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, if you want me included, then the motion for us to ratify the end result. That's fine.
Motion by Mr. Yeager. Mr. Yeager, can I, can you explain your motion on the floor? Could we unchange it?
Yes, basically what we're doing is leaving that number in of two hundred and, rounded up to two oh eight. Was that what it was?
Two oh seven nine six three.
About two oh eight.
There you go.
Got it right.
He's got it right, okay. And, uh, so my motion is to put that in the budget for the clerk and administrator to work those numbers and work with the unions. And at the end of the day, they'll, they'll come back to the board to ratify. But we've got that number in the budget for us to set our mileage rate.
I got a mo, I got a motion by Mr. Yeager. I got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries four and no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we talked about earlier increasing those revenue sources based on the vote of the board and the wishes of the board. I need those ratified by resolution. First one, like I had said, is the, um, each driving permits and the tipping fees, um, for garbage. Uh, you, these are in the proposal already, but, um, these things require passage by resolution. So if the board would entertain a motion, resolution.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Second. Is that for both resolutions?
If you wanna put them both in, that would be great.
Yeah, let's just do them both.
I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. I got a second by Mr. Yeager. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries four and no.
And I have a couple more things, um, before we move forward. We received information last week from the small county coalition, um, giving us an estimate for Medicaid. Um, we have in the budget what the Department of Revenue had given us, uh, and comparing that with the small county coalition's numbers. And, um, they're, they work on a state fiscal year, the state does the OR, and we work on the county, which there's a three months allowance that you have to make there. Um, it would, um, increase our Medicaid costs by one thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars if the board wishes to increase that line item. We will go ahead and include that in the...
I think we need to, need to do that. Uh, that number seems low comparatively to some of the other estimates, but I'm, I'm glad it's as low as it is on this year. I, I think our struggle on that's gonna be in the coming years to come. But I, I'd move to put that amount into the budget for that.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries four and no.
And the other thing that I have for you is bringing back to you a proposed decrease for the, um, ERA. Right now, uh, based on the mileage rate that we proposed to you in, in proposal number three, you could reduce, um, your budget line item for this by twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So moved. Ms. Chair, it is what it is. The, the increases go, go to them and the decreases come from them. So, so moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries four and no.
Um, if the board wants to set the tentative mileage rate and the date and time of the first public hearing, um, before we leave today, we would ask that the chair kindly recess the meeting and let us, um, figure what our new countywide mileage rate is. And then we can come back and give that to you if you're ready for that move.
Mr. Chairman, I have one issue that I'd like to put on the floor. Um, we've discussed that we are in a position, we need to think out of the box, and we need to do whatever we can to cut numbers. And I'm not in favor of raising our mileage. And I've gone through the budget, and I would like to ask the board to consider, um, the jail budget. And we have farmed our female inmates to Bay County. And I would like to have, um, staff look at essentially farming our male inmates to Bay County as well. Um, it's a, a forty-one dollar a day charge to house the females. And I know Bay County has a new jail facility. They have the capacity. It benefits Bay County to fill their jail. And we would be able to shift all of these costs into that daily cost for the inmates, as well as shifting the liability out of the county. And I think that it, it's a small amount of inmates that we house to run an entire jail facility. So that, it's something that I would like to possibly have some discussion from the board.
Uh, I would defer to the jail administrator on the cost of transporting and all those kinds of things, plus the cost of first appearances and all that kind of thing. So it'd be a study. I'm all for thinking outside of the box. And I'm, I'm not for mileage increase either. And, you know, I think the only way to get there is thinking outside the box. And the only way to get there is to consider not only, uh, these budgets, but consider the five cent on the, on, on the gas tax. I know it's, it's unpopular. End of the day, we gotta be leaders in this to take the burden off our property taxpayer. And so, you know, I mean, I don't know that we could implement anything with the jail at a, at a short amount of time, but, uh, you know, I'd, I'd defer to Don and Michael to discuss.
We can, uh, we can get some numbers together. We, we actually, four and a half years ago, ran the numbers on contracting out the jail or transporting. The problem comes, it's easy to do the females because we average like five or less at any given day. Our average on the males, even though they're low right now, they, the average, the running average is about forty. So the numbers don't work out when you have to have, you don't have to have a full staff, but you still have to have one person on twenty-four seven. So, which winds up being four point something to cover the deal. Uh, so that's still, to do first appearances, still have to be booked in Guff County. The females still have to be booked in Guff County and transported. So it really doesn't work. We run the numbers again and look, uh, based on, you know, it cost us about seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars to house the females in Bay County. We have some transport costs. And you multiply that by eight for the average daily for the, for the males, plus we still have to, to handle the medical cost, even though they do the medical over there, we still have to handle it. It, it moves that number up substantially, so. But we, we'll come back with a number and show you what, what it looks like. I, I can tell you, the contract out, the straight contract out was way out of line because it's just not big enough. We'll come back with a number.
One thing we've been able to do over here with the jail is used to, we average seventy. And I think with, with, uh, Michael, uh, Mr. Hammond, working with the judges, uh, we've got that number to average down to forty. So we've actually reduced the number of inmates. You still have to have the staff and all those kinds of things. But I'd like to see the numbers.
And, and I am happy to work with Mr. Hammond and Mr. Butler on pulling that together. But I, I do think it's something that we should, um, seriously consider. Um, Mr. Hammond was able to save us. I, I believe he told us at the last meeting, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand by farming those females out. And if we could just really revise this and, um, save the cost of the jail, I think it would solve a lot of our issues.
You know, and I, I'm all for looking at all, so alternative sources of revenue. And we've looked at some. Uh, I don't mind setting the mileage today be over. That way we can't go up, but we can certainly get back down to what our mileage is now. So we can still come up with some alternative sources of revenue. We've discussed the five cent sales, uh, gas tax. We've discussed others. We've implemented some. We've increased the landfill, uh, fees and all those kinds of things. But I think this board needs to come back with some out of the box thinking about how we can get that number back to the, the literature it is. I've never voted for a mileage increase that I can recall and that, that certainly over the last five years we haven't. So I'm, I'm, I'd love to get back to that number if, if we can. But to get back to that number with the increases from, from Medicaid, from the increases from, from healthcare, from the increases of the fuel, from the increases of retirement, uh, you can't get to that same number, no matter what we did. We can't run government and get that same number. We got to think outside the box. We gotta look at alternative sources of revenue. And we need to come back with some ideas before we set that final, final mileage rate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a minute or two. Uh, we're currently operating on our five point seven four one nine. The first proposal was to increase that to seven point five, which is a one point seven eight mileage increase. Our first meeting, second proposal, we dropped that from a one point seven down to point nine two. Then in this, uh, what is it? Third proposal, been going on, it dropped to a, what's point, what is this? Point eight?
Point eight eight oh four is the difference.
To point eight eight oh four. Uh, you know, we, we cut it in half. We went from one point seven, we're down to point eight now. So we, this, we, we just went in and trimmed the fat out. I don't know if we can cut this more, much more. I went over this budget. I sat down and go over this thing and go over and go over, line item, just like we did, uh, what, two weeks ago, a week ago. We sat here, what, six, seven hours, and we took it line by line by line by line. And we found some mistakes. We cut it. Yes, we can cut some more here. Yeah. We can cut some more. We can reduce some, not cut it all, cut them back. And I, I went through and found about fifty thousand more dollars on that. Now, what does it take, uh, to drop you, uh, ten? See, from, uh, where we at now, we're point eight, go to point seven.
A little over a hundred thousand.
It takes a hundred thousand dollars to drop it, just one tenth. Get somewhere, some middle ground there. Then if we had to go out here to the, uh, property owners and the people who pay this, what always amazes me, I get my taxes every year. And all the county commissioners, they really get it. Oh boy, they like ducks and water. They can just keep on running. Well, nobody ever questions that, cause little Johnny, he's, he's learning his ABCs. So he's always fall back on little Johnny. We have to fall back. And I, that always bothered me when I pay my taxes every year. County is the lowest. And I live up in the city, we hitched on, pop in the city and out, and theirs is up, uh, they claim, well, we got plenty of money. I know why you got plenty of money. Their taxes are high there compared to county tax. So we are low. I don't wanna increase. I'm with Commissioner Bryant, I'm on the same, we're there. But we can go back and go again. If you wanna set today, we will, we'll look more, but just hate to go out here, these people. And I know where the big tax base, I know, I know where the tax base is. That's shook out the most. Hate to keep going back, going back and going. You know, each one of you just take this thing and look over and go back again. Look, look, look and see. I want people to say, well, you just set up there and let it go. You didn't try. Yeah, we tried. Have to have an increase. Well, sell it, maybe justify it. But if not, I'll have it.
But just, just like Mr. Uh, Ms. Bryant was saying, we got to think outside the box, that five percent gas increase that was put out there. I mean, the people got to understand, it's coming from somewhere. It's gonna come from somewhere. Either you gonna pay higher taxes or we gonna come outside this box. But a few things, the five cent increase on the gas, uh, or the one percent that we putting on the, uh, referendum to vote on. The money got to come from somewhere. I mean, I don't agree with what Ms. Bryant just said about the jail. I'm not saying I can't be persuaded that direction, but as of right now, what I'm looking at, from what I'm saying, I don't agree with that. I, I, I really keep the jail just the way it's, I don't, but like you said, let's put the numbers on the table so we can see what's going on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before I make comment to the board, we, we received some numbers from various departments and all the changes. Uh, this is July budget. We're working on budget May and June. And even as late as Friday, we got some changes. That's not front of you today. And I'm not even suggesting put it in front of you today, but, um, like insurance, maybe someone changed their mind, they're gonna go from single coverage to family coverage with changes to bottom line on insurance. There's several changes in, I'm looking at land. But, um, I think on those, um, vacation settle back, one thing or another, um, if something carries topic, we can look during the year. If something you can handle during the year. But we're in proposal number three now. And October end this morning, let's not put these in front of the board. There's some, some cases three time hour reductions, some cases five time hour increase. Just, the budget keeps changing. Proposal budget, October first is changing. It's, it's live. And, but at some point in time, we gotta quit and just, uh, take that up inside the budget. If somebody's got five time hour increase, they gotta get somewhere else out of their budget. So I'm not suggesting to make amendments at this point in time, and most of them are small. Um, if the board were, if something were to come up that, even as it own during the year, you can, you can modify, you can amend it then. But I don't know any paying big one. The biggest number I saw was like eight thousand dollars, but, but...
We do, we do have the TDC change, though, that we would like to get ratified this morning if we could.
That's a wash.
That's a wash. And it's not ad libor.
But I just, we're, we're gonna get, get two foot down the road. And, uh, we had a submission over the weekend of, well, I got a, I got employees going to, um, family coverage, definitely changes their rate for the department. Um, I, I think we can squeeze the rest of that department's budget to make up for it. Otherwise, we get nickel and dime dead all the way to the end.
Don, one thing too, is we, I mean, we've talked a little about, about reserve. I brought, brought that up. It took us a while to get that two million dollar cash carry forward, you know, years ago. And I'm not sure what that number needs to be at the end of the day. But I, you know, I think at the end of the day, I don't wanna have too much in reserve and still taxing my taxpayer out there. End of the day, when we get the final number, it takes a little money out of that cash carry forward. And Becky, I, I know it's hard to, to say, but what does it take to run us for the first few months before that tax revenue starts coming in? I know that's basically what we run on.
We can go on the spot.
That reserve. And I, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I mean, uh, if that...
I can tell you sometimes when we do your payables, it can run upwards of a million or better just one time. Um, but, yeah, we'll look at that, you know, we'll, we'll sit down and take a, a good look at that between now and the, um, first public hearing.
Take a look at that, because at the end of the day, I don't think that we can cut this budget enough to get to the same mileage rate. But if we can supplement some of it, and I don't wanna put us in a bad position.
We should do a, a big cut for that, but, um, we'll... Um, we'll look at it again, um...
Okay, okay.
Let me make a comment on that up, I may. If we can get this on down through here, and there's some more cutting can be done in here, and, uh, it won't hurt, I don't mean to cut them out, but they can do some reductions in here, and, uh, get it down to where, when maybe we could, as Commissioner Jaeger said, we could step over here and balance out. We can't take all of it and do it, we just can't say, now, but, here, here's another thing, uh, we were in meetings this morning individually, board. Bay County, they got their BP, Chairman over there, Gainer, he said, we're going to apply that, we'll worry about the next budget the next time, but we're gonna, you're not going to the taxpayers, and that was Gainer's thing. The city, Port St. Joe, they settled the other day for, what, half a million dollars? That's not much, but we, I wish we had a app or something to work here to offset some of this. Our golden egg hadn't come yet, even, it's not here, so we just, we can't, we can't bank against that. If we can cut on down and get this down, Mr. Jaeger, or Commissioner Jaeger, get on close, we might, can reach over here in some of these reserves and, and balance it out, and, uh, and, uh, what's old saying, we worry about next year and next year. Maybe we should be worrying about it this year, but be fourteen, fifteen fiscal. Let's just look at it then.
We'll, we'll work with Don on that cash carry forward, um, for working out.
Okay, because, you know, we also got the reserve, we've got our reserve to, that we don't ever like to get into, but we've got it sitting over there, and, end of the day, I don't want to keep too much in reserve or too much in cash carry forward and, and continue to lay some burdens on our taxpayers. I appreciate y'all looking at that. Uh, do you need a recess, Becky?
Yes, we will need it. Time to cross the numbers.
All righty. We're going to pause for about a fifteen-minute recess.
We hope fifteen, it might be a little more.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, before you recess, just if the pub, if anybody in the public's not coming back from the reconvene, just wanted to remind for the commission tomorrow night at the Honeyville Community Center, six o'clock central, seven o'clock eastern, um, there's a workshop in front of the commission with Sacred Heart, the Department of Health up there, and everyone's welcome to be there, so if anybody's not coming back in fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, please, if you remind them.
At this time, we're going to recess for about fifteen, twenty minutes until Ms. Becky, so we can start back up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You are currently with the, um, adjustments that you made in proposal number three, you're now at six point five six oh eight for your countywide tentative millage rate. If the board, um, chooses, you may, uh, make a motion to tentatively set that as your millage rate. Can you state what the increase is there? That actually is a deep...
Decrease, it's a decrease.
Uh, by six point six, six point five, about.
Becky, what's that increase over last year's budget?
Um, she'll tell you. The millage difference is...
Nah, it's a dollar amount. Or you can give me the millage dis- difference.
The millage difference is point eight one eight nine.
That's it.
You know, we're getting close to a million-dollar increase, you know, I, I'm, along with less thinking outside this box, and, you know, I know that we've already voted on it, we've already looked at it, that mandatory per, trash pickup, now I could save you, discount it three hundred thousand dollars by doing away with picking up roadside pickup. And there again, what you do is put it on the user, you, you know, the user pays waste, the waste management, or whoever the contractor is, and that takes it all, us supplementing with tax dollars, you know, to, to do that, and it just makes sense to me.
How much, how much?
So I think we need to consider that, I think we need to consider the, the bed tax, although, uh, Yonifer's gone, but we've talked about increasing the one penny, and we've got some issues with that this year, it'll have to be in next year's budget probably, but we need to talk about that to supplement the sheriff's budget if we take that off at, at long, because it's the service that we're protecting here, so I, 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 I'm going to, for the sake of moving this process along, I'll support just setting this tentative millage rate, but we've got to decrease it, and, and I want everybody to think outside the box.
What was that number you gave on the, uh, garbage?
The estimate, I think, Don, wouldn't the estimate close to three hundred thousand if we quit doing roadside pickup and taking it to the landfill? And, and you just incorporate that with the mandatory garbage pickup? And I can't remember, none of them may have been different.
I think the direct, indirect cost, because, one thing, you quit picking up roadside road, they would have to take landfill and pay a ticket fee.
And, and, and bottom line is, we've got, we've got, you know, we've got a lot of folks setting it out there that, that if waste management pick it up, it could be part of the contract, it will actually reduce the rate. If we go to mandatory garbage pickup, it's going to reduce the user's rate, because you've, you've got one hundred percent just touch, so let's think outside the box, guys, that's, that's one way to do it.
And I, I agree with Commissioner Jaeger on this issue, and it would free up our work crews to tend to our drainage ditches, which as we've seen with, um, all this heavy rain pour that we've had, it is an important function of the county for us to be able to keep the drainage ditches open and, and keep the, um, the roadways mowed so that we don't have the mosquito problem or the bug problem. Um, it all works together, and we've got folks that are paying double for garbage pickup, because they're paying for garbage pickup and they're also paying their taxes to cover additional fresh pickup, and I think it's something that we definitely need to look at. I thought the staff did a good job in presenting an option for us, and I think it's a, a step in the right direction, it would free up our, our, um, work crews, and it would save us some money and help us out at the landfill, so I would, I'd love to see the board reconsider that issue.
Bottom line is, most cities have mandatory garbage pickup, so you vote the cities have.
I have, I have, I have no problem with mandatory garbage pickup, because...
I think that's what we need to revisit at the next meeting when we, when we finalize this, this tentative millage rate, or, or we'll be commensurate with that.
So this, what number was that, three hundred, uh?
The estimate was about three hundred, it may go, it may go up or may, you know, may it be...
So the three hundred, I'm just running numbers here.
We need to negotiate.
That's correct, we, we would need...
Let's see what that number is.
That's, that's correct, with, with waste management.
Going to, uh, and we have a contract coming up next year with waste management, is that correct, or we go out, uh, we may not even be on the waste management.
I'm on it.
I'm sure, so now then, if, if that's the case, we're down to point half, I think I can, I think we can reach in here and get a little more, then we might can offset it with the, uh...
Reserve.
Reserve.
That's another numbers on that.
Okay. Come back with numbers, and at the end of the day, I'll tell you, when you put that thing out for bid next year...
Oh, yeah.
If you have mandatory, that number's going to drive, drop tremendously for your taxpayers and their fellow.
There's another component to it. Today, it happened less than a week ago, between Court and Ward Street on Alabama. More than we could haul off, we, we tied on trucks, that went right away. More than we could haul off, crossing through a house, by ours. But more than we could haul off, we tied no trucks. There is, and not long ago, it was same thing on America's between Bay and Atlantic, and...
Everybody's abusing the system, absolutely what they're doing, they're clearing their lot, they're asking us to pick it up and take it to the landfill, and that's what's filling our landfill up? I mean, there's, at, at the end of the day, there's no terminal point cost savings you'll have if you go to mandatory, and whoever has that contract pick up your roadside debris pickup.
Just, just to clarify on that three hundred figure, so that we don't, uh, the three hundred figure was parking and or selling the limb trucks, eliminating those two positions, which we're not going to do, obviously, because we're short, so, I mean, that's going to be some of it, and a hundred and twenty thousand in lost revenue for tipping fees that we're dumping for free, so it, it is a win-win, but whether you can actually take out three hundred thousand is, is not necessarily, because, again, you're going to transfer them to do other things, it is a chunk of money, and we try to get you a good payment.
I understand, and part of it will be in this, this budget year, it'll be in next budget year, but we've got, we've, we've got different stuff.
Can I get a motion?
A motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike, Mr. Mike, Mike Moore? Mike, Mike Daniels? I'm thinking about Mr. uh, Mike Moore right here about that mandatory garbage pickup.
He already been here.
Yeah.
I asked, I think, to move this process along, but we're going to, we're going to reduce this one.
Got a second by Mr. Jaeger? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries for or no?
Put a second.
Um, the next, uh, thing I need, um, by motion of a, a vote of the board is to set the tentative millage rates for the, um, dependent special fire districts, uh, St. Joe Fire Control District being at point four mil, um, two below Overstreet and Howard Creek, each being at a half a mil each, you can do all of those as just one motion.
I, I'll move for that.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant? Do I have any opposed? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries for or no?
The last thing I have is for you to set the first public hearing. Our recommendation is that you do that on September the tenth at five oh one PM here in the commissioner's meeting room.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Do I have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries for or no? Mr. Butler?
That's all.
Do we have anything from the public? Anything from the public? Can I get a motion to, you got a motion by Mr. Jaeger? Ever by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Yeah.